Welcome, welcome. We have our regular attendees, plus one or two. December 9th, 2019. We're almost at the end of this decade. It's pretty amazing. Looks like 10 years of the 2010s, I guess would be the decade, or just about to end. So, is that right? Yeah, 2019. Anyway, it's not a nice day out there. It's cloudy, rainy, cold, December 9th. I guess that's typical. We don't think we really want snow. We had that a week ago and we spent a lot of overtime and a lot of extra time making the village safe. And I'll thank the highway guys later, but we also did our four corners cleanup the first of the year, which was important because it helps the merchants, it helps traffic, it helps pedestrians. But it was a little early for having to trigger that expense. But back to the meeting tonight. Originally, we had scheduled, you'll see on the agenda, a public hearing for 7:00 PM on that zoning review committee we're working with here internally, looking at changes to the general business district/highway business district and the intermediate or interlocated R-10,000 district there. Unfortunately, there's some technical issues. We're prepping up zoning maps and things that aren't quite done. And when we change local law, we need to get that out to the board before the public hearing, so you can all be well versed. So later on tonight, we'll reschedule that. We could probably do it at our January meeting, but I just wanted to know that if you were here particularly for the public hearing at 7:00 PM, we're not able to hold it tonight. So therefore, we can move into regular business, but if anybody else on the board has anything to say on that, but I think we'll just shoot for the January meeting. We'll look at a date later when we're in our regular business and try to pick a time and date. But should be okay. So we will not open the public hearing, nor will we close it. We'll just postpone it to another time. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Any other discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Thanks. I thought we would do the minute approval just to get ourselves into the initial pattern here. We had a meeting on November 4th and then one workshop November 21st. We did circulate the minutes. I've reviewed through them. I don't know whether there are any other additions, alterations, or corrections. I'd move that we adopt those two minutes and put them up on our website and other postings. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. I think since finances are important, we'll do that next and then we might, as I told a few board members, I'd like to bust that out of our regular agenda to talk about the solar farm, the community solar farm, and a couple of technical points. We have Kai here, who's an engineer with Sun Common, and we'll, rather than keep him all night, we can switch our agenda. But as far as the treasurer's report, I thought we'd read that out and look it over. We are now at, as of the end of November, that'd be our six-month 50% point of our fiscal year. And account balances, the treasurer's showing in the general fund, $531,462. Water fund, $89,062. Trust and agency, $19,038. Petty cash, $71. Village Green, Brent usually repeats this later, but we're showing $4,149. Hard Scrabble, $7,868. Health insurance, $8,468. Sewer fund, $30,260. As far as the reserve checking, you'll recall that we are now asking the treasurer to report them. These are reserve funds we have outside of the regular operating funds. And one is the fire department capital reserve. It has $2,505. Is that with the voucher that we see tonight? Probably not, right?
Yeah, it is.
Okay. And then police, there we have a capital reserve fund for vehicles and equipment. That is $12,002. The infamous USDA short-term asset, that's the water fund short-term asset fund, that has $87,976. And I think in the vouchers tonight, is there $25,000 going into that this month? Or has that happened already?
I believe that happened already.
Okay.
This month, was it? Okay. I did it early in the month.
And highway, again, that's a capital reserve fund. In there is $18,169. Expenses, general fund this month, $296,883. I'll stop there. It is relatively high, but as you go through the vouchers, you will see that it's a time of year where we pay our police and regular employee retirement pension funds. So it's about $114,000 in those two funds there. And they were pretty consistent with what we budgeted. We're off by just about $1,000, not in our favor, but that's not too bad because some of it's based on projections. But anyway, it's about $114,000 as far as on top of our normal monthly expenses there. Water fund expenses were $49,557. Trust and agency expenses were $19,038. And sewer, this is really an EFC matter, but it's showing as a sewer expense right now as we book it through. It's $27,582. That has to do with additional engineering costs related to change orders, related to the Department of Health's comments, considerations, and changes they've been pushing back on. So our engineers have to charge us for additional work they're doing. Anyway, that's the treasurer's report with some commentary. I would ask that when you get a chance, board members look through, what I usually do is put a 50% handwritten note on the supporting pages there and look to see who's staying consistent with budget and both on the revenue and the expense side and see how we're doing. All that said, I would move that we accept the treasurer's report for December 9th meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion or thoughts?
I have a question.
Yeah, what's that?
So line 5110.48, the DASNY grant expense, are we going to make that, I don't know, whatever, correction or amendment?
What did you note in Michelle's box?
Amendment? It's, yeah, because we took it out of the 5110.42, the street maintenance. It's for the parking lot expenses.
Let me just find you there, Brent. Two-sided prints thrown me off here. Dot 48.
5110.48.
Yeah, that looks like the gross parking lot improvement number. And is it still also being parked in the original lines that it was tagged to?
So I think some of the expenses came out of maintenance of streets. Just make the correction so, just so I know how much we have to maintain the streets with, with the balance.
Yeah, the numbers should be known to everybody, meaning we came up with the 44987 because we had actual expenses.
Right.
Maintenance streets is shown heavy, so we have to get that backed out.
Yep.
We'll have to do that Thursday. As I recall, Brent, we did move on that maybe two months ago. It looks like it just has to happen within the QuickBooks here.
Right.
But that is our intent, to get that cleaned up.
So Thursday, maybe?
I had more communication with DASNY. I have to fill out forms E1 and E-2 and, you know, it's, but our goal is to get that 44987 reimbursed and then clean up the other lines. And those folks might recall, we have, we had a $125,000 grant from, through Kevin Cahill's office, and we spent about 74, 75 to buy the lot. And we just repaved, relined, re-lit, and reconfigured a few things so it's more able to be our parking lot and our community celebration center. But, okay Brent, so I think we had a motion, a second, some discussion, call to vote. All in favor, accepting the budget?
Aye.
Aye.
The budget report, I guess, to be more accurate. All right. Like I said, we could direct the board to their packets and we'll just bust that out of our normal routine here. And we'll jump to the regular business agenda there. The first one is solar project lease amendment one, line easement. I put dash tenant. It's essentially, the folks here will recall that back in June 27th, we signed the main lease agreement with the developer, who is essentially composite LLC, Red Hook CSA LLC, I think was the actual name. It's a combination of solar developers, KSI, and Sun Common. If you drive over there now, it looks like it's maybe 85% done over there. It's a lot done. But part of it, we had to reconfigure, and the board is familiar. We talked in workshop and had different engineers in here past month or two. We're bringing the Central Hudson easement in and then meeting it with an easement we want to grant to the developer. And legal documents, a couple lease amendments went back and forth. This is the one we've agreed on. Council's looked at it. Essentially, we're outlining the duties, who can do what, you know, within the lease area. Essentially, once it's built, you all will recall that we designed within it room for us to add additional water supply wells if we need. And, but late in the game, we did realize there was, I call it the hypotenuse, I guess is the word I've been using. There was a right triangle that we do have a service supply line going to one well that's was not diagnosed, not known by anybody on our side until people were putting in some posts for solar arrays and so forth. So that's dealt with in this amendment. So essentially, council for our side and the lawyers that work with the developer put this together. We have references to site plan October 14th. And we did circulate to all of you the amendment with attachments. And if you look, what we have to deal with tonight is lease amendment one, there's a resolution, and then there's a third page, which memorandum of lease or some of the key words in there. That memorandum of lease gets filed with the county as an addendum or supplement to our June 27th lease. So I asked Kai to come in case anybody has any specific engineering questions, but within it all, I banded it together in a paper clip here. Here, LC, we're, we have the right to go on the property and the leased property in cases of emergency. And fortunately, we do have the access road and different things in there already, so there's no, I don't see this major change. It's mainly to get the power off the array out to the Central Hudson grid is the key change that came up. So I would ask if Mr. Jay Trapp, would you want to read the resolution out loud just so we have a composite?
And just for the record, what number is that?
42.
42. Thank you. Resolution approving modification to site plan and First Amendment of land lease with Red Hook CSA LLC for community solar project. Whereas in connection with Red Hook Community Solar Project consisting of the installation of a 1.73 megawatt AC community solar array on an approximately 9.5 acre portion of parcel 6272-14-400497-0000 located in the town of Red Hook and owned by the village of Red Hook, the village board has, one, approved a site plan entitled photovoltaic parenthetic solar electric site plan prepared by Sun Common, including visual renderings, landscape plan, and survey for the co-location of solar panels and related infrastructure with the village well field infrastructure located at Glen Pond Drive. Number two, approved the lease of the project site by the village of Red Hook to the project sponsor together with access via an existing gravel drive serving the village well site. The clearing of approximately one acre of trees, installation of ground-mounted solar modules mounted too high in, too high in portrait, not exceeding nine feet in height. And three, determined that the construction of the proposed solar project is immune from the application of the town's zoning law, provided that the project shall be subject to sections 143-37, parenthetic EFG, and D sub E through sub J of the town's zoning law, including the requirement for issuance of a building permit. And whereas pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, the village board approved the determination of nonsignificance regarding the project on June 17, 2019. And whereas the village has previously approved and entered into a land lease agreement with Red Hook CSA LLC dated June 27, 2019. And whereas Red Hook CSA LLC has provided a revised site plan for the project entitled photovoltaic parenthetic solar electric site plan prepared by Sun Common dated October 14, 2019, to provide for relocation of the proposed utility connection points within the property of the village and adjacent to Firehouse Lane. And whereas a form of the First Amendment of Land Lease Agreement parenthetic amendment for relocation of originally proposed power connection point is on file with the village clerk. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the village of Red Hook parenthetic village board as follows. One, village board hereby determines that the revised site plan and amendment will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts and reaffirms the determination of nonsignificance regarding the project as so modified. Number two, the village board hereby approves a revised site plan and authorizes the mayor to execute a revised final site plan consistent with this resolution, and a copy shall be filed in the office of the village clerk and the office of the town clerk. Number three, the village board hereby approves the execution of the First Amendment of Land Lease Agreement with Red Hook CSA LLC in substantially the form on file with the village clerk and the mayor, or in his absence deputy mayor is authorized to execute such agreement with such changes as shall not materially affect the substance thereof. Number four, officers, employees, and agents of the village are hereby authorized and directed for and in the same and in the name on behalf of the board to do all acts and things as may be necessary, or in the opinion of the officer, employee, or acting agent desirable and proper to affect the purposes of the foregoing resolution. Number five, this resolution shall take effect immediately. The question of adoption of the foregoing resolution was duly put to a vote, a roll call vote, which results are followed.
Thank you, Jay. Yes, I wanted to just get that out into the record and for everybody to hear it all together at the same time. Like we said, it was circulated and the lease amendment does have, I would say, snapshots of the particular connection easements and so forth. They are part of the October 14th site plan, which is a typical large-scale site plan document, which we have. Also attached are exhibits B1, let's see, they talk about lease parcel one, lease parcel two. There are the meets and bounds descriptions that are outlined in the graphic illustrations on exhibit A. As part of it, we do have the first amended, restated memorandum of, let's see, first amended and restated memorandum slash notice of lease. These go hand in hand. I would think that part of what Jay read there was within the resolution, the resolved parts, it's designed to pick this up. Essentially, this, as I understand it, this part gets filed with the county as attached to the initial lease that we signed June 27th. So that being said, within the context of the resolution, you heard Jay read the words, where we, we looked at what we call a Monroe process back in the phases as we discussed all this. That's pretty much dealt with in the bottom of the first whereas paragraph. Then the second one specifically mentions State Environmental Quality Review Act. That's the seeker part, which we're saying, and what I believe is that these changes do not materially change any of our findings earlier. And like I said a few times, we've sat and looked at the connection point and we did, you know, move, keep things moving forward here. Anyway, I would offer it for some discussion. Jay's read it. I would offer that we approve and adopt resolution 42, as is in front of us. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion or thoughts?
Just a couple, real quick, just, just housekeeping basically. On the First Amendment of Land Lease Agreement?
Yeah.
The first paragraph is, First Amendment of Land Lease Agreement is dated as of December 9th?
Yeah, we would plug that in, yes.
All right. And then the same applies to the first amended and restated memorandum slash notice of lease. There are two blanks there. I assume they're both December 9th?
Which were you on there, Brent?
This is the second attachment, first amended and restated memorandum, notice of lease.
Yeah, yeah, they were left blank just so we could pen in when we actually did it. But December 9th would go in the top one for sure. Did you say there was a second one?
Yeah, there's a second one down there.
Three lines down. Yeah, let's see. Yeah, they would be both December 9th.
All right.
Thank you. Any other thoughts or questions? So it does call for a roll call vote. I think I would just like to add to the resolution part. Let me just look here. It says, number one, the village board terms revised site plan will not result in significant adverse, so we're dealing with a seeker there. The village board approves revised site plan, authorize the mayor to execute a revised final, a final site plan. Village board approves the execution of the First Amendment of land lease in substantially the same form. I think I would like to add there, and the title of the second, where it uses the restated memorandum wording. So if the clerk, if you could bracket the second document we have stapled together. Yeah, we, I think if we insert there, the village board approves the execution of the First Amendment of land lease agreement. And then the other attachment we have with the meets and bound is actually called first amended and restated memorandum slash notice of lease. It's this one, somebody. That makes sense, everybody? Because it's really asking for a signature on another page. Kai has some comment out there?
I believe when Jay read the resolution, it referenced the section block and lot member. I believe it was incorrect. The last six digits you read, I believe, were 400497.
Yes.
It should be 27425. That is the adjacent lot. It's actually adjacent, also owned by the village, but the lot that it referenced in the resolution should be 427425.
Okay. So Kai, I'm hearing you, but instead of...
427425.
Instead of 400497?
400497 is the lot that's closer to Firehouse Lane. The lot that actually contains the leasehold premise is 427425, which is actually...
Is that on here somewhere? I could see it.
Right here.
Ron, yeah?
That corresponds with the reference and descriptions of the two easements.
If you look at the detail that actually shows the lot lines with the yellow lines, there's...
Okay.
The 18 acre parcel is 427425.
Okay, I'm just double checking you because it's pretty scary that you know these numbers standing up at it here. Okay. Okay. I mean, I believe you, but, you know. Okay. So in that first whereas, in connection, consisting of installation of the 9.5 acre portion of parcel, we're going to delete 400497 and put 427425.
So that, that doesn't change anything on the first amended and restated memorandum? There's all kinds of meets and bounds on exhibit A? All right. All right. I mean, that, that parcel number is included in it.
The transmission easement, I believe, is?
Yes.
That's correct. That is the lot between the leasehold parcel, 427425, and the road.
Okay.
The transmission easement goes through 400497 to get to the road. But the leasehold premise and what the land lease amendment should pertain to is a larger lot, 18 acre lot, 427425.
Right. So this is all correct, it's just the resolution itself. All right.
Okay. Thank you, Kai. So I was amending the one paragraph there to talk about the second document, memorandum slash notice of lease. And then we would modify per input from consulting engineers, that lot number is corrected to what does appear, just for the record, it does appear on the bigger scale, on the right, the other 427425. I'm comfortable with that. Any other thoughts, questions? I'm going to call it to a vote then. Charlie, okay, if I call a vote, you good?
Yep.
Voting, Ed Blondell, I vote yes. Brent Kowalczek?
Yes.
Charles Lang?
Yes.
Jennifer Norris?
Yes.
And Jay Trapp?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So we will perfect what we have to sign by tomorrow and then, unless you have any thoughts, we can let you go and we can switch to our regular business. Okay, we good? Thanks for coming, Kai. Turns out it was a good thing you were sitting there.
You earned your money tonight.
All right. We did the treasurer's report. Looks like I can do a police report next. Let me find it first, folks. Okay, thanks. For the month of November, we had a lot of action. Let's see, but as far as count of incidents, 360. Breakout is 242 in the village, 114 in the town, four in the village of Tivoli. Tickets written were a total of 79. Breakout is 51 in the village. Three of those are parking tickets and 28 in the town of Red Hook. Arrests were 15, 10 in the village, and five in the town. Later on in our regular business, we'll talk about some local police activity and things, but we'll hold that for later. Mr. Trustee Trapp, you ready to delve into planning and zoning items?
Oh, yes, sir. Okay. We have, the Dutchess County Planning Federation Board of Directors has completed its final presentation of the 2019 calendar year, and we are currently planning our spring soiree, I guess. And it looks like we might have some, some interesting classes coming up. And I think one of them is going to be Ken Carney, a friend of the board, and everybody knows Ken. He, he's going to talk about some affordable housing and things again, so it should be pretty interesting there. Our last presentation was about, it's called BES, Battery Energy Storage Systems. And the, the basic idea is that anywhere from what your solar panels might store at your house from production to an industrial or even a utility size, which might be a, it was a little surprising to me, looked like giant storage containers, like 10 of them in a row, that might be a system of batteries that are like positioned at a substation and things like this to prop up the grid if a brownout or something, it would then... So it was kind of interesting and they gave you, you guys a book, and I went under the table and found the other book, which is the, the entire whole deal here that Nicerda puts out. So I'll leave this around if anybody has any interest in, and if you can't sleep one night or something like that, you may want to pick this guy up.
Want to leave it in the conference room? It'd be a good spot.
Yeah, here you go. I'll pass that down here. Presentation was pretty good. It was, it was relatively not heavy on the technical data. It was more, I thought, more general information. There was some discussion that was technical about, you know, how many megawatts and everything, and it kind of, we got in the weeds a little bit about that. Most of it was, what do you need to look out for? That sort of stuff. So that was... So, that was interesting, and we're working on ISAI stuff for 2020, so I'll get on to the other thing that Brent and I and Ray Toll have been working on, trying to untangle our zoning a little bit, hopefully, and it's incredibly complicated, I guess, it's, I'm not, that's not an understatement, I don't think.
Yes, sir.
And we're working on that, we continue to press on with definitions and maps and things like this, and I think we'll probably talk a little bit more about that, and we reschedule the public hearing on that. But as far as our planning and zoning and building department in the village for November, there were four building permits issued, four certificates of compliance, two municipal searches, twelve fire inspections were conducted. The planning board, I think, had a meeting and tabled minor subdivision and no November two thousand and nine ZBA meeting, and an area variance for twenty-four Prince Street was tabled to December nineteen, and so, and the building department did pretty well for this late in the season, two thousand ninety-two dollars was taken in, so.
Good.
I think that's about it for me, man.
Thank you, Jay.
Yep.
We'll just put in the back of our heads, I added to our agenda for regular business, we'll set that public hearing for the January meeting. Usually Jennifer with some sense of calendaring is our, she's got like some sense of Wednesdays or holidays or whatever. Anyway, looks like, since I mentioned Jen, you want to go next and talk about some of the fun things we do?
Forget my annual cold. We wrapped up the year, we had Friday Night Lights with a, like, lit, lighted, lit parade and festivities, that was this past Friday, they lit the tree, and I wasn't able to make it, but I saw you in a hat.
I was there.
So, it looked like a good turnout, and the weather was fairly cooperative. That was last Friday, and the Elmandorf had their annual Old Dutch Christmas open house. Yesterday, they had a different theme with gingerbread houses, but they all had to have solar panels on them. It was very cool, very cool. Materials management for the month of November, we had seven point five seven tons of garbage and three point three six tons of recycling, which breaks down as follows, one point four four tons of commingled, point two six tons of cardboard, one point six six tons of newspaper, and we sold two thousand nine hundred fifty-six dollars in garbage tags. We will not be holding our annual e-waste event in January, it's too cold, logistically it's a mess, and usually snows that day, and it's freezing, so we're going to do that in warmer months. But in the meantime, Ulster County Resource Recovery right across the river will take electronic waste, including those giant televisions, I had a twenty-year-old one and was able to deposit it for free with no problem. So that's something to keep in mind if you have any electronics that you get for the holidays and need to get your new, get your old ones out of there, but in the meantime, figure out a warmer time to do our e-waste.
Yeah, normally about now we're scheduling it, and we always timed it out to be consistent with Bard's Community Service Weekend, the Martin Luther King Jr. Weekend of Service, so they would send up a lot of volunteers, but I think, like Jen said, a couple of years, it might have made it over twenty degrees, and then last year we got the collection day in, but I think we had eighteen inches of snow that night. We knew it was coming, so we were going to be really smart, we were going to tarp everything, but the only problem, the next day, the people came to pick up, the company we sell to comes with a truck, but you ever try to get eighteen inches of snow off, like, two hundred feet, square feet of tarped, packed pallets that you can't really get around? I almost like died, I think, but we decided, you know what, between the cold and this and that, so like Jen said, we'll look for something, we've mentioned it at Red Hook together, where we meet with Bard fairly often, but I don't know if they'll have a similar weekend, we might have to rely more on our own volunteers, because when they get later in the spring, they start having finals, and when we consider it warmer, their commitments to study and might not have the time. But anyway, like Jen said, there is still a resource recovery free collection, but it means you have to drive over and get rid of your things by going in. We, I think we're going to put something up on our website detailing it, you go during their open hours, and essentially, you just have to join it up with a trip if you're going over something else, and it's free.
Yeah, it's super, I mean, my television easily weighed a hundred pounds.
Yeah.
And the hardest part was just getting it in my car.
It was probably in your basement too, right, or where'd it come from?
No, it was in my, it was on the main floor of the house, that is the...
Because I remember that.
Basement, and never, it would have just died.
That's the thing, because we always offered to take one of our village trucks and help usually older folks get something out of their house, but I remember from what you're describing, getting one of them, those big Sonys, I think they weigh at least a hundred pounds, and then if you're trying to get it upstairs, oh, it's wicked. But just to repeat something, Friday Night Lights was really fun, it was, we had good crowd, we set up a tree, it was a real nice conjunction of the, we'll call them, the East Market Street merchants were a main driver with their Friday Night Lights, and then we chipped in with logistics, we helped get the tree set, located, and Dave's tree did a lot of help getting the upper lights. Nobody realizes, it's like your kitchen or your living room tree, you can kind of reach your upper lights, but these trees are, you can't reach in normal ways, and really fun, a lot of young families, a lot of young kids, and Santa was great, he got here early, and he did a great job for us, and we kicked off the holiday season here, and we also remind everybody, shop local, please, go see our stores, you know, take a look before you plop into Amazon World, but it was good. Thanks, Jen.
We were doing zoning. Let's see, it looks like we want to hear about some water. Mr. Lang, are you ready to talk water?
Yeah, absolutely. So I have the Village of Red Hook Water Treatment Facility's monthly report here for the month of November. The water treatment facility treated five million seven hundred and three thousand total gallons, which is an average of a hundred and ninety thousand one hundred gallons a day, so this is in line with another last, the prior month, which was also below two hundred thousand gallons a day, which is nice to see us staying at that less elevated We sent away three samples to Smith Environmental Labs for testing, for testing coliform and E. coli, and they all came back absent, and we also used fifty-five gallons of sodium hyperchlorite, so the average daily use was one point eight three gallons per day. We do have what seems to be quite a list of meter issues around the village that we are trying to address.
Yeah, let's take a speed look at them.
The vast majority seem to be high meter readings and meters rolling over. I'm not quite sure why there are so many suddenly.
Well, I think this is about, we're weaning down, whittling down the list, but some of these names look familiar.
I think they've completed, cost a fifteen of them.
Okay. And then, just to remind the board, and I was watching, we did send out letters, what, two months ago, trying to set up appointments to get people, our people into the houses, so I know they are working on that. I'm just looking at some of the names and locations here.
Just to let you know, too, we're going into the next quarter, and we're still over nine thousand dollars in delinquent water.
Nine thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'll look at that, Charlie, while you, if you want to keep speaking there?
I don't know. Did you want me to speak about anything particularly?
You're good, you're good. Well, I thought maybe we could talk...
I mean, we still need to, I mean, there's been some SCADA issues, the SCADA communication system, I guess, but, and then we have the ongoing issue of the elevated tank. And I guess connected to that, the town-village interconnect.
Yeah, I guess those two, we could segue, Brent might have something, but December, we're expecting to hear from our grant application to the WEA world, we're told we will hear in December, and today's the ninth, so it's...
For the active charcoal?
Is that, we put three components, the charcoal and the PFOA, PFS, interconnect, and we called it sustainability, interconnect, and then the elevated tank, keeping it online as a safety backup. So we're playing our bets, keeping that elevated tank up there for now, until we hear from the WEA side. Not sure what our chances are, we're always optimistic, though, we'll see what happens. And then, you know, looking at what we do with people that don't pay their water, we're loathe to turn them to dry, but there's one or two that are pretty high.
One's a bank, one's, I circled it.
That's a bank?
That's the bank.
Even though it's got a person's name?
Someone's deceased, and it was a...
Oh, it's like held by a bank, okay, okay. So if we turned off the water, they wouldn't mind, huh?
Hmm.
We don't really like to do that, but if nobody's living there, I don't know, but... Yeah.
But when the house closes, I will collect that money.
Yeah. Just to fill everybody in, we have been having some Good Friday meetings, we now have, we're trying to recreate and redevelop the administrative side of our water operations, and we're spending a lot of time, detailed time on correcting some of those names on the list Charlie was looking at. I'm convinced we're on the right path. We still don't have the ultimate solution, you know, what one staff person, what is our end game? We can talk about that more as we redesign certain things, but, you know, we have been trying to develop in-house with some help from the outside consultants, and with our own highway folks, but that model wasn't quite working to its proper capacity in my mind, so we're, now we're having a little more, we're actually meeting with our software consultants on a few things with regard to tightening up our software side, what we can do, what we can make the software do more for us, and on top of that, you know, look at rate, but we're, right now it looks like we're okay with rate, but we're actively working on it every Friday, so we'll keep you posted. Thank you, Charlie. Let's see, we could go to DM Kolotchuk, you ready to go there, man?
Yes, I am. Now, start with the Village Green Committee monthly report, current balances of the Village Green Committee's related budget accounts, ours follows, community beautification, we have two thousand seven hundred eighty-one dollars and sixteen cents, shade tree contractual, there's two typos there, the actual number is one thousand five hundred dollars, according to the treasurer's report. The Village Green Committee checking account is four thousand one hundred ninety-two dollars and ninety-two cents. On November ninth, fourteen volunteers planted twelve trees throughout the village, trees were planted on Faili Street, South Broadway, Garden Street, Benner Road, and at Richard Abraham's Memorial Park. A luncheon followed at the Red Hook Town Hall and included members of the Red Hook Town Tree Preservation Committee. The Village Green Committee would like to thank Michelle Decker of Decker Construction for helping dig the holes, and as always, the Red Hook Village Highway Department for distributing the trees and mulch, and all the officers and volunteers that helped make this year's annual fall planting a success. This was a cold planting day, our roots actually froze up, so it's like the third, third time in a row, the last two times were raining, and this one was cold, so spring will be warm. The Village Green has prepared the Tree City USA application, which is due December thirty-first, so we are working on that. A memo was received on November first from Central Hudson reminding local authorities of Central Hudson's routine line clearance program. As a result of the introduction of several invasive insect and plant species within their service territory in the last decade, Central Hudson has been working with municipalities and residences to remove diseased trees that pose a threat to public safety and electric service reliability. The line clearance program complies with state and federal mandates that require all utilities to conduct an effective vegetation management program in order to reduce power interruptions caused by trees. And if Central Hudson will send out notification letters to property owners in advance of any vegetation management activities adjacent or on their properties.
Hey Brent, if I can interrupt there?
Sure.
I saw it was probably a ten thousand dollar job somebody had done on Benner by Central Hudson crews, it was, took down a monster tree that historically drops a lot of big branches right over power lines, so I think it makes everybody in the village a little more assured of, you know, getting through power and storms, and power averages related to storms, but...
And we did lose power, I think.
They had like literally five trucks and about ten guys, it was a big, big tree, and so it saved us having to deal with it, it was a good thing.
Village Highway Department monthly report, Village Highway Department, I don't know if they're going to be picking up leaves anymore. I have a pile of them sitting under a big wad of snow, but if it melts out, they will finish up and with the leaves, I know there are a few residences with leaves still out there, and also some brush piles, so we're hoping they do that. The Village's snow ordinance, however, is currently in effect through March thirty-first. No parking is permitted on village streets from eleven PM to six AM, and on New York State highways from two AM to six AM during the same period. When snow or ice removal operations are underway, any vehicle parked or abandoned on any street may be removed by or under the direction of the Red Hook Village Police Department or any responding law enforcement agencies, and costs associated with vehicle towing and storage will be charged to the vehicle's owners. The owner and or occupant of every building lot in the village within adjoining sidewalk shall remove snow and ice within twenty-four hours of a snowstorm. Which we did twice this week, or at least I did.
Oh, you did, okay.
I'm one of the lucky few that have sidewalks.
You're the guy we send out to clear up the twenty-four hour violators?
Just me, no, just my property. Revenue from the sales scrap metal was received on October thirtieth for the amount of two hundred and fifty-five dollars, and on November first for the amount of four hundred eighty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents. Total revenue generated in this fiscal year is one thousand five hundred fifty-two dollars and seventy-five cents. Since the inception of the scrap metal recycling program in September of two thousand and seven, thirty thousand two hundred and sixty dollars and twenty-two cents has been generated, and proceeds for this program go toward the purchase of tools and equipment for the Village Highway Water and Material Management's Department. Anyone interested can, if donating scrap metal can contact the Village Highway Department or the clerk's office, and the Highway Department will pick up scrap metal upon request. The Red Hook Infrastructure and Intermunicipal Task Force report, Red Hook Sewer Project. Meetings were held on November first, eighth, fifteenth, and twenty-second in the Red Hook Village Building. A meeting was held on November first with Dutchess County Department of Health and our attorney, Victoria Pollidero, and also C.T. Mail was on the telephone, and to discuss the continued review of the Red Hook Sewer Project, additional comments from the DOH were sent to C.T. Mail on November first for responses. These comments included coordination issues between the specifications and drawings, designed pumping levels at the wastewater treatment plant, and requests for additional details. C.T. Mail responded on November fifteenth and are currently being reviewed by Dutchess County Department of Health, which they already reviewed, and sent us another six comments, which C.T. Mail is currently addressing at this point, hopefully this is it. A conference call was held on November fifteenth with the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation Water Permiss Section Chief, and we just called them for further review and approval process of the April eighteenth, April, I'm sorry, April of two thousand and eighteen, application to amend the speedage permit for the projected increases in discharge of the wastewater treatment plant once the Village's sewer project assumes ownership and is operational. As a result of this call, the DEC has elevated our project to review process to a critical status. And we did get comments on November twenty-second, preparation of the notice of complete application is underway. There was a discrepancy in the seeker negative declaration... There was a discrepancy in the seeker negative declaration regarding the maximum amount of discharge required for the amended speedage permit, and that is being addressed by our attorneys. So that's the second holdup, DEC and DOH simultaneously, so we're inching closer, hopefully soon. Um, a CT Mail design engineer reviewed existing site restoration conditions of properties located within the service area of the Reddick Sewer Project on November 25th, and the anticipated date to advertise for bids is approximately six to eight weeks. And this is as of the end of November. The DEC public comment period of 30 days and final preparation of bid documents should be complete by this time. We are looking at an extended completion date of 2021 to give potential contractors more flexibility in the village to receive more competitive costs. Um, I don't know if, well, the Community Solar Project, we met with the contractors on November 8th, easements were signed and we went through that already. Um, so most of, what'd they say, 75% of the PV panels are already up, and they're looking to be completely hooked up by the end of December 2019. The Route 9 Old Farm Road Water, Water Main Loop Project, meeting was held on November 22nd with some of the property owners involved. We reviewed the contract between property owners and the Reddick Village Attorney, reviewed water usage to verify and confirm the rates and flows are compatible with the DEC water withdrawal permits, um, for the village. And the Dutchess County Department of Health requirements and comments are being addressed to the property owner's engineer. The Water Loop Project will connect dead-end water mains to provide more efficient, safe, and easily repaired water distribution services. The properties along Old Farm Road, which includes traditions at Red Hook and the Ross Property, and South Broadway, um, north of M&amp;T Bank. The costs associated with the project, including engineering services, filing, and construction, will be paid by private property owners benefiting from the village's municipal water connections, and costs for the permitting and construction oversight will be paid by the Village of Red Hook. Ed mentioned briefly the Village of Red Hook Water Distribution System Administrative Services Improvement Projects. We met with representatives from Delaware Engineering on November 15th and 22nd at the Village Building. Um, 10 new cell read meter heads have been ordered and have arrived and are being scheduled for installation. And Delaware Engineering is preparing spreadsheets of all meter endpoints and records of malfunctions, repairs, and replacements. New work order forms and procedures are being created to show when order was requested, when it was completed, descriptions of the findings, who made the findings, serial numbers, endpoints, locations of all water meter, repair replacements, fire hydrant inventory, and hydrant flushing valve exercising schedules. Some good news in all this, the New York State Department of Transportation Crosswalk Signals, we received a letter on November 15th informing the village that the installation of solar-powered rectangular rapid flashing beacon, or RRFBs, assemblies at the intersections of South Broadway and Morgan's Way, and West Market Street, um, and Benner Road will be installed sometime this month. The RRFBs are expected to be complete and operational sometime this winter 2020.
Did I interrupt you Brent? Because the acronym we, is actually called a FAST grant and we laugh about it, because I think Steve Zarkchuk might have been on the board when we first talked about these flashy pedestrian crosswalk things.
We got a grant.
But today, I got something enhances what you just reported, but it's a lot of engineering DOT speak, but it's received today, December 9th stamped into us, but it's called designation of restricted highway contract to give a number, PIN number, pedestrian safety action plan, Poughkeepsie and Red Hook Dutchess County. Essentially what it's, it's like police amendments, we looked at, there's graphic maps and, um, they're showing where we're gonna be working on this, it's by the high school, is our, the RRFBs will be by the high school and then by the senior citizens crosswalk. But included, it's kind of fun reading, um, essentially saying they're entitled and they want to warn us and we'll have to notify our police and highway guys, but that under the contract, they're gonna be posting signs, signals, barriers to do the work, and it'll be affecting traffic flow.
Didn't they mention anything about the other two?
Not in this letter, no.
Fraley Street and Prince Street.
But it looked like there's some new signs, they stuck on the other two interim, like taller ones, but, but anyway, for folks listening, this, this special designation calls for establishment of maximum, minimum speed limits, so it'd be on nine, not for the duration of our lives, it's just for the duration of the project while they're, so they'll probably do some speed limit changes. It could affect weights and dimensions of vehicles, and it would, uh, control persons, equipment engaging, work on the highway.
Did they give, give you a date?
Uh, they, they say we're attaching one, no, but it, I think it's consistent with what you're reporting from that letter, they said the winter of 2020. This makes me think it's even closer than we knew last week, so.
Yeah, 'cause they mentioned December.
Yeah, but we'll have to give this to Dan and to Hillary Branges, so they, uh, kind of, they see signs going up, they know what it's about. Thank you.
Slow FAST grant. The intermunicipal task force, both Charlie and I sit on that, we meet, um, we have met on November 1st, 8th and 15th at the Reddick Town Hall, and we're looking at, um, basically we reviewed the comments offered by the public from the, um, October 30th Joint Economic Development Committee, Intermunicipal Task Force Public Informational Meeting on short-term rentals. Um, we reviewed and discussed a proposed one-time exemption, allowing property owners in the town of Reddick to offer their property unhosted in all zoning districts for use as a short-term rental for one time per year, up to 30 days. We reviewed and discussed allowing certain properties in the towns RD3 district that are surrounded by or adjacent to properties in Egg Business District to use their properties as SDRs with similar regulations and restrictions as property in the ABD. And again, the goal of the task force is to recommend the adoption by the Reddick Town Board of balanced and reasonable regulations governing short-term rentals, allowing citizens to share the economic benefit of their property while protecting and preserving the neighborhood character and long-term housing availability. No meetings of the Reddick Town Zoning Review Committee or the Community Preservation Fund Advisory Board. Um, however, there was a, a joint meeting with members from the Reddick Village Board, that would be me, the Town of Reddick Trails Committee, and the New York State DEC to review the possibilities of using community preservation funds for a proposed trail connecting Reddick Estates to Smith Street across the DEC regulated stream and wetland buffer. A site visit was conducted on November 8th to review site constraints and review possible solutions and proposals. A follow-up meeting with the town attorney, um, actually happened last week, uh, to, to review the possible use of community preservation funds for recreational easement or partial property purchase. And the current balance of the community preservation fund as of November 30th is $1,535,331.80. The Saltkill Watershed Community monthly report. Um, the Saltkill Watershed Community meeting was held on November 20th in the Almendorf Inn. Jay Beaumont, representing the Moon Nut Creek Watershed Intermunicipal Council of Orange County, um, presented, uh, the council recently received the Hudson River Watershed Alliance Watershed Wave Makers Award. Mr. Beaumont has received, has over 40 years of experience in the water and wastewater engineering field, including 14 years as Executive Director of Orange County Water Authority. He shared his experiences, insight about water protection with the Saltkill Watershed Community. We also had a brief presentation about the Bard Water Labs Flow Cam. Uh, it's a National Science Foundation Research Cruise for a closer look at microscopic marine life. And the village received a memo from the Cornell Cooperative Extension on November 22nd. Cornell Cooperative Extension is assisting the Saltkill Watershed Community with the process to get the Saltkill added to the New York State List of Water Bodies and/or designated inland waterways. This would allow eligible communities located along the Saltkill to apply for available, available federal environmental protection funds administered through the Department of State Local Waterfront Revitalization Plan for community waterfront revitalization and protection-related initiatives and projects. Busy on that one too. The Northern Duchess Alliance Executive Committee, which I sit on, meeting was held on November 8th, and the Northern Duchess Alliance has hired James Levy of Planning for Places to prepare a white paper guide for the Northern Duchess Communities to use when considering regulations for short-term rentals, very hot topic in Northern Duchess. Planning for Places is currently preparing a survey, did you receive that yet, the survey? To be sent to local Northern Duchess Municipal officials for the purpose of compiling and assessing information regarding short-term rentals. This, this initial effort will set the baseline for the remainder of the project. We also reviewed data from Host Compliance, which is a consultant for Dutchess County that tracks websites for listings of short-term rentals in Dutchess County. And we reviewed and discussed understanding short-term rentals, the challenges and possibilities of short-term rentals in our community, prepared by the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development. You guys get that, right? Your planning board? You guys get those newsletters from the county? This was a very good one.
Did you say no?
You did.
Did you say?
We don't get...
I think they should probably come to Lara.
Yeah, I think Lara should get them.
What we could do, I know I circulated a digital version to our board, to Lara, and Jennifer, I say please distribute out to the board, your zoning board and planning board members, so we'll have to double...
Yeah, they should get copied on those.
I'll check in with Heather to make sure that it's getting to Lara.
Yeah, those are very good, they come out, I don't know, quarterly maybe?
Plan on it, yeah.
Yeah, and they got some good stuff, but the last one was on short-term rentals and pros and cons, and a lot of things that are being discussed throughout Dutchess County right now.
And that's just a deal with that, they knocked it on 4,000 down to 400.
Yeah, and Jersey City, was it, Jersey City just passed legislation, it's going all over country right now.
We have one of the ones that are working like that.
Yeah, so we're looking at, I know on the task force, we're looking quite a few, and also Reinbeck's, Woodstock's, it, it's just happening everywhere. So it's one of the things that we're trying to do is just create a white paper to guide municipalities and when they determine regulations. Um, the Town of Reddick Local Waterfront Revitalization Program, LWRP Working Group, uh, we met on November 19th at the Reddick Town Hall. Um, the town is currently amending their local waterfront revitalization plan. Um, the group discussed New York State Department of State's requirement to provide proof of the town's western boundary. According to the documents of the DOS, when Reddick separated from Reinbeck in 1812, the boundary was described as a medium-high watermark on the shore of the Hudson River. Duchess County's Reinbeck and Germantown's boundary, as well as the Reddick Town maps, legal documents, and laws indicate the center line of the Hudson River as the western boundary of the town. So there's a discrepancy right now in what is the actual boundary, the western boundary of the Town of Reddick. And according to the documents at Department of State, when we seceded from the Town of Reinbeck, they declared that the shoreline was our boundary, not the center line of the Hudson River, so we have to prove that we're actually in the center line if we can. Um, additional research and correspondences with the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development, Pace University, Reddick Town Planners, and New York State DOS continue to clarify the proof of boundary requirement. The Village of Reddick Zoning Review Committee, as Ed or Jay has alluded to, Ray Towell, Jay and myself all sit on this. We met on November 1st and 8th, we took a break for Thanksgiving. We did review short-term rentals, the pros and cons, and the effects on neighborhoods and businesses. We reviewed supplemental regulations, which is section 200-19 on apartments, accessory apartment in a single-family residential structure, and section 200-19B accessory apartment and accessory structure existing at the time of, of adoption of this chapter. We submitted a description of amended boundaries of the general business district and the neighborhood mixed-use district, proposed zoning map amendments and provisions for the existing single-family, two-family, and multifamily dwelling units in the GB, General Business, to our attorneys for review and comments on October 19th. This will be setting a public hearing to review those. And the Board of Trustees originally set the date of December 9th, but it will be amending that. And the proposed zoning map amendments recommend the expansion of the boundaries of the general business district to include portions of the R10,000 district along East Market Street from Grave Street to Cherry Street, and the incorporation of the existing highway business district into the general business district. The Reddick Village Zoning Review Committee also recommends that the neighborhood mixed-use district be expanded from Fraley Street to Amherst Drive, and including a property on Fifth Street, which is adjacent to the light industrial business district or chocolate factory. That's it.
Good, all right. Let's get ready to move from the scripted report reading part overnight to the regular business, which is a little more free-form, a little more fun. But just one thing, in Brent's report on short-term rentals, he mentioned the term, there's an entity after host compliance, and he mentioned how the County Department of Planning circulated a really great understanding type document, which is really worth reading. Host compliance does indicate within the Village of Reddick, they monitor internet activity, there's eight residences in some shape or form, either bedroom or unhoseded, that are, um, active in, in short-term rentals, that could be ranging from, uh, the various private entities that are out there, not, not just, uh, the major ones you hear of, but, so it's eight, whereas the Town of Reddick has about 126, as I recall, somewhere in that mid 120s. But our situation, I'll call it dilemma, is I think a lot of our main street business sees a positive burst from those visitors who are here as tourists. A lot of people are here sampling the area to see if they want to buy here, so it's, it's a balancing act as far as what we do. When Brent reports on that one task force, that's a Town of Reddick Committee, we're looking and listening to the issues and ideas they come up with, but we, he's, that's a town committee that he's reporting back on there.
And we've been discussing on our zoning review committee here, you know, that there's a big difference between a village and a town, and, um, and we're still looking at the need for regulations and restrictions in certain parts, but, um, we're, we're gonna come up with something that'll be a little, a lot different than what the town's proposing, so stay tuned.
Okay, so we'll segue from, his last point was the ZRC, he was describing where they're at, and that's the public hearing we essentially put off tonight, and calendar guru Jennifer Norris says our next regular meeting will be January 13th, so I would ask that we consider just setting the public hearing at 7:00 PM that night, that'll give the technical side some more time to develop the maps, and, uh, so I would move that we set a public hearing on the general business, highway business, R10 zoning proposal changes, um, for 7:00 PM on January 13th, is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Hi.
So Cindy, you got that?
Yes.
Okay, good. And then, um, solar project we did, water code regs, I was trying to entice that of Charlie before, but when we're sitting now with our outside consultant, we're looking at our current water code, and there are some dated things, like there aren't a lot of our code. We probably should start, I thought, print out a paper version of it and just start looking at what's antiquated and outdated, and if you would have time, Charlie, not that you'll solve it all, but maybe if you highlighted what's some problematic things, then we could start looking at it and, uh, we could work on that. And then, um, thank you, and then the other thing I want to do, an out loud thank you to the highway Brent mentioned, and we touched on it earlier at the opening of the meeting, but we got blasted a week ago with almost two storms, I think they started plowing Sunday night, and then Monday was not too bad, but then Monday night it came back and dumped another eight or 10 inches, and big enough to complicate their schedule, our budget, and then the most, more important thing too, is the four corners got really blasted with state DOT snow that gets rolled onto our side of the curb and therefore impedes our merchants, our pedestrians, and traffic flow. Like, you know, we budget about two four-corner cleanup, as we call them, but the highway foreman knew that we had Friday night lights coming up, and it's pretty much the three weeks where our merchants have to make a lot of their money for a year, like all retailers, this season is really important to them. So, um, they came out Wednesday night and did the, uh... So they came out Wednesday night and did the choreographed street cleanup that you've never seen. We would invite folks to come, but we don't want you to get run over because big machines and big trucks are moving fast, but they did a great job. I think it's unbelievable, they shovel around the trees, mailboxes, you know, it's like they really care to get it opened up totally. So it looks good, and so far we got a week out of it, so that's good. And it's, the worst nightmare is if you pay one and you have another one a week later, that's killer, but so thanks, highway guys and all the folks that helped them. It does help the local economy in a different way, too, in that we retain and hire anybody who has a big-sized dump truck, different things. There was a little machine macho thing going on, though, our highway man, remember as a board, we authorized approval and bought a used, it's the big snow plows that they use on big commercial mall, shopping mall lots, it's a big box plow they push. So Dan was convinced me that our backhoe has a little tough time pushing that big a blade, so I authorized on emergency basis a bigger vehicle. But I looked and it was, there were two of them out there, another contractor had one, and it was like they were dueling on the streets, it was really fun to watch, but I was like, holy mackerel. But they got it done quicker, and there is that side because we pay everybody by the hour, so the quicker we can get them off, the better for us, but it was good, they got it done. And then shout out, we don't have our police folks here, but they got tangled up in a pretty nasty live exchange of gunfire about three weeks ago. Fortunately, nobody got hurt, but our full-time officer Travis Sterrett was working with one of our new hires, Natalia Tellus, and they were in a life-threatening bullets running around their bodies situation, and we're lucky they didn't get hurt and nobody else got hurt, but there had been serious charges pressed against the person they came up against. And we would like, right now it's still, we know the party was indicted for two attempted murder charges on our officers, but we're waiting for a little more evidence to come out, and we probably want to do some little testimony of valor for them more formally, but I just wanted to thank them and let the audience know, it was big talk, a lot of news, as it was happening one Friday, and I ended up staying here until we knew what was done, but we're really very glad that nobody got hurt. Anyway, New York State Controller response to audit, this is where we had done that exit interview with the Controller's Audit Team, and that's included in the audit that they circulated. We do have one more chance to do another response, which I do want to do, have them drafted. They're consistent with what we showed, we've showed our improvements on our fund balance, we've showed that we believe with home rule, we can choose and pick how we operate certain parts of our operation. I thought I'll tune them up, circulate them for proofreading and concurrence, and then we could look at that in a workshop forum. We have until early January to get it out, so I'll keep you up to date on that. I had on here appointments, Associate Justice Village Court. We have the elected Justice Treewasser, who's been in office for multiple years now, but by rule, we can have an Associate Justice who helps when there's a conflict of interest or the judge is away, there's certain things that is still empowered and authorized by the court, whether the Associate Justice takes a case, has nothing to do with us, we get to appoint the Associate Justice. The reason I bring it up is we currently use Danielle Cordier for the past maybe two years, but she's indicated that at the end of December, she would like to move on, she's has a full-time job with commuting and some other obligations where she can't make the commitment to be here for those cases that do come up, that she would have to be around for. So we are working with Justice Treewasser, and I think that we're close. We've had some discussion, but I'll, we'll work on that and appoint before the year's out, probably our December 19th meeting in workshop. And then what we could do, we set the public hearing, we talked about DOT status on the FAST grant. Cindy did bring something up, we converted some of those CD reserves over to money market reserves. She did come up with another one, it's called the Zoning Law Reserve Fund, kind of apropos for the ZRC, but unfortunately, lads, there's not too much money in there, $1,186.85, so.
We haven't hit them for anything yet, have we?
That was the first time.
There you go.
So well, this one, I don't know, Cindy, could you think about this? This one's in a CD now, and it looks like it makes the whopping annual percentage yield return of 0.19%. It's probably not one we would attack that often. Probably in the near future, we're going to update our code. I'm inclined to leave this, how would you have to get this out? Do you have a timeline when to get that out by?
Uh, does it say there? No, it doesn't.
No. To me, it's not as crucial, it's not a lot of money.
We won't be spending money on.
I think we could just, what we've been doing is moving them to that money market fund, so they're more accessible, but this one has such a little amount of money, and I'm thinking maybe we should leave it and take it out when you guys are done and, you know, instead of.
Well, Cindy had a good point about the updates, you know, they're going to cost to get all that followed through, so maybe that's.
I think we'll just hold it for that, yeah.
I'll take it though. I'll take it back tomorrow.
Thanks. Let's see, general business, I think we hit everything in regular. Before we go to public comment, anything else from the board on your mind that we need to talk about? As is our custom, anybody in the public would like to make a comment on agenda items or any items? If you could say your name, just so those that don't know, you know you.
Um, I think you really should look at.
I don't know, Ms. Panda, Amanda, can you get, pick them up, or should I give them the mic?
I think they'll be okay.
Okay, okay.
When you do the budget for the police department with town next time, I think you got to pump in $100,000. The last three police cars have been operated in town.
You know, it's a good point. Yeah, I think we could go on the record in our redesign, ultimate design plan, you know, the village is 2,000 folks with tax caps and with budget constraints, whereas the town is 11,000 gross net out tively in our village, so you maybe have 9,000 folks.
And we've been looking at the record, how many police cars were designed.
Yeah, and what I was meaning by redesign, we do talk about it, and even those, these more horrendous events that we've just encountered the past six weeks, they tend to be town events. So we are talking with the town and, you know, how do you configure and redesign, but my goal would be someday it's a town PD and we contribute a piece of it toward the big expense, not, not the other way around. We have started preliminary talks, and I think the public could accept that, you know, it's, right now, we do a lot of running and we have a lot of exposure over and above what money can pay for. So that's, we're working on it.
We have had this conversation that at some point, it may exceed our ability to afford it.
Yeah, because they are, you know, we are kind of numbers-oriented, a lot of us up here, and you look at it and it's, although they're an excellent department, you know, how much growth can you sustain just being a village, whereas in a town, there is more growth. And, but yeah, it's a good point. Anybody else in the public? I think what I would like to do is, I do have executive session on the agenda with regard to employment matters and particular individual. We would like to leave the board on the front of the room here, but I don't see a vote occurring after we come back, so you're all welcome to say, as our usual custom, but if not, can the board help me? I think I've checked everything off that we had on this list here. And with that, I would move that we go to executive session at whatever it is here, 8:15, to discuss employment of a particular individual.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
We'll be back in a bit. Welcome back, it's 8:37, we just left executive session, so I suppose we should formally move that we're out of executive session, back to regular. I would move in that direction, is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then the vouchers are circulating up and down the desk here. We need to pay those bills, unfortunately, so I would move that we pay bills after audit, which is the process we're underway right now, so is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
And then I think we hit everything we needed to, we've got that public hearing set for a month from now, and then we would ask Mr. Kavalkachak for any final thoughts.
No final thoughts, except I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I think I'll second that, on favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.